Item number four, 52 Oak Grove Avenue. Architecture and Site Application S-16-041. Requesting approval to construct a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence on property zoned R18, APN 529-30-025. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Any disclosures from Commissioners? Vice Chair Kane? Guilt?
Guilt. Guilt. I visited the site, had incidental contact with Mr. Tullis, but I did outrageously flirt with his two-year-old daughter. She's now missing. What happened?
He also mentioned a future governorship that he may be able to attain if he had my daughter's eyes, which I've...
If I had blue eyes like that, I'd be governor by now. That's right.
Vice Chair Kane, you're really in trouble now. All right. Ms. Armour, I understand you're presenting the staff report this evening.
Yes, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. The project in front of you today is the proposal by Bob and Eleanor Tullis to add a second story to their one-story home. The existing house is just over 1,900 square feet with a 368-square-foot detached garage, and it is on a lot at the end of Oak Grove cul-de-sac with Noviciate Park on two sides of the rear. The proposal is primarily the addition of a second story to be 1,148 square feet. Upon initial review, staff had three primary concerns: the large oak tree that overhangs part of the existing house on the west property line; the fact that the proposal was a two-story home with a prominent two-story front facade on a street in a neighborhood that's primarily single-story homes; and that it would, as proposed, be the largest house in the immediate neighborhood by square footage. So in reviewing the project, staff found in discussions with the applicant that they had actually located the second story in its proposed location because of the oak tree, and the consulting arborist for the town did go out and evaluate the situation and felt that with some standard types of conditions, the tree would be adequately protected during construction. The consulting architect was also involved in reviewing this application, the town's consulting architect, and he provided some revisions to the proposed plan to try and increase the consistency of the proposed architectural style and to reduce the impact of the two-story on the neighborhood. In his results, as you can see in his report, was that he did find it was compatible with the neighborhood. In addition to that, in taking a look at the proposal, it is located on a parcel that only has two immediate residential neighbors, and there are significant setbacks of the proposed second story from those neighbors, as shown in Exhibit 4, where we list out the both existing and proposed setbacks. However, the proposal is still a two-story house with a two-story front facade and is still the largest house in the immediate neighborhood. Therefore, staff does recommend denial of the proposal. If the planning commission chooses to approve the project, staff has prepared findings and considerations included in Exhibit 2 and draft conditions of approval in Exhibit 3. This concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Armour. Questions of staff? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for the staff report. That was helpful. My question was just on timing in terms of what we're looking at. You had mentioned that based on the reviews of the architecture that the applicant had reduced the size 200 square feet. So given what we have in our staff report packet here, it says that the current size is 3,131 square feet, not counting any part of the garage, and the next largest house would be 2920. So was it originally 3,300 square feet and came down to 3,100? Or am I...
Right. Originally, the proposal was approximately 400 square feet greater than the next largest house in the immediate neighborhood. The response to staff's comments in terms of calculation of floor area, not counting stairs twice, is one of the elements of how you calculate floor area, so they corrected that. And they did do a little bit of a setback in response to the consulting architect's report, and that also reduced the square footage slightly so that they are now, instead of 400 square feet larger, they are now approximately 200, I think it's 211 square feet, greater than the next largest house.
Any further questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
On the letter Larry King made concerning issues, he said there are many examples of this two-story architectural style well-integrated in the context of one-story neighborhoods. Specific concerns include two things, which he cites: the large, single-wall plane at the front of the house. That hasn't been changed, has it?
It has, actually. As you can see in the two illustrations on the same page of that report, in the first illustration, there's an area that's grayed out in their initial proposal. All of that was one plane, and he suggested taking the portion to the right, the right half of the front facade, and setting that back slightly so that it would break that plane, and that is what they are currently proposing, so that there is that break between the front facade elements.
I looked at the story poles. Of course, I guess you can't see that, because what I see is a large frontal plane. The second thing he says is the jamb and trim between the paired windows seems too wide. That's been changed, too?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I will now invite the applicant and their team to step up to the podium, which I assume that you have done. You have 10 minutes to address the commission, but let's start by stating your name and your address for the record.
Sure. Hi, I'm Eleanor Tullis, and this is my husband, Bob Tullis. I'm the applicant and the homeowner. So when we started looking for a home, we were engaged, and we used to cycle to Los Cados, and it was our dream to find a home here. We fell in love with the town. We loved the small-town feel of it. We loved that it was dog-friendly. It just ticked all of the boxes in terms of where we wanted to live. And then when we found 52 Oak Grove, it was like our dreams had come true. The lot itself, sitting on an area where it was backing onto trees, is very similar to where I grew up in Ireland. I grew up in a farm. There was trees in my backyard, and I fell in love with the house immediately. The house itself wasn't something that we were going to always want. We did want family. We did want to extend. We did want to develop the house, but the front garden and the back deck to us were the areas that we really fell in love with. So when we looked at remodeling, there was a couple of reasons that we really were looking for more space. As Commissioner Kane mentioned, we do have a daughter. We have a growing family. Hopefully, we'll be able to add to that and have a little sibling for her, and with that comes the need for more space. Additional to that, neither Bob nor I are from the area where we've come here and we've grown to love it, but we want my daughter to know and love her grandparents and our cousins and nieces, so we want some area for his parents and my family to come and visit us. I also work for a company where I'm required to work at home in the evenings and be on video. Right now, I'm doing that out of the corner of a bedroom where I'm trying not to show the video of the bed, so having an office space would be really ideal. So that really was the rationale in terms of looking for more space. When we looked at the plot and why a two-story, firstly, Bob and I both grew up in very traditional two-story homes, so recreating that was something that was our ideal dream, to be able to have that two-story home for us to grow up as a family. Secondly, when we looked at the plot, if we built on the same floor, on the ground floor, if we built forward, it would have impacted our neighbors much more so. Their view would have been impacted in terms of looking straight on to where we would have built on the ground floor. If we've built backwards, it would have taken away the beautiful deck where we get to enjoy the trees in our backyard. So just the lot itself, it didn't make sense to us in terms of building on the ground floor. Then when we looked at our neighbors and worked with both Jennifer, our architect is Jennifer, as well as our planner Jennifer, making sure that we had no privacy issues with our neighbors, we specifically designed it where the second story didn't have any windows looking onto our neighbors. We specifically made sure that when we were looking at the shadowing, that it didn't have any impact on our neighborhood. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac. It was nicely set back. And in looking at those guidelines that you have, we tried to comply with all of the areas in terms of what the consultant architect said, putting the setback in, having the shingle going across, so really trying to make it as feasible as possible based on your guidelines. On the size, I want to address that one. We did take the planners' and the architects' considerations into account, and we did take it down from 400 to 200. The last 200, any plan we look at, ended up being an impact on my daughter's bedroom in terms of size, and when I thought about me growing up and my husband growing up, we both had study tables in our bedroom, and that was something that I thought, okay, I have to get over my nerves and come and fight for this as a mom. I want my daughter to go to school here. I want her to hopefully even go to college very close by and be able to spend her time studying in her room, and having that private space for her was really important to me. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jennifer to talk about some more of the specifics around it.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Kretschmer, AIA. I am at 101 Old Blossom Hill Road. I'm the architect for Bob and Ellis Tullis at 52 Oak Grove. You've heard Bob and Eleanor, or Eleanor, talk about what inspired them or what made them decide to go ahead and do this addition to their home, and what I would like to talk to you a little bit about is a little bit more about the property description. That property is on the end of the cul-de-sac because it is completely surrounded by oak trees that are 45, 50, 60 feet tall. So any home in the neighborhood would be dwarfed by the oak trees. They have a large area in the front of their home that is, a front area that is undeveloped. It is open space, and it is, the front of the house is 70, almost 70 feet away from the neighbor's house, and with the second story, the way we did set it back, that's almost 90 feet, and I believe Jennifer has one of the site plans on there that shows the distances from that. So the house was really sort of setting it back and actually going up two stories keeps the house away from the view of the neighbor on the other side of the cul-de-sac whose windows look directly into the open space. And we were very cautious and very looked into their concerns about privacy, so the only window that faces that neighbor is a small, high bathroom window. Sort of the process of how we got to this design style was when Bob and Eleanor came to me, they said that they wanted a very traditional home. They even sketched little things for me, like little cute pictures, and when I went through the residential guidelines and the field guide to American Houses, I identified that as a national style. It's either a gable-end or an I-house-type style, which is something we do see within Los Cados. The neighborhood context of that street, we call that in the residential guidelines informal urban, but it's really a series of mostly ranch, but there's an eclectic style there. There's multiple different types of materials on the street. There are some two-story homes as well as single-story homes. A lot of the single-story homes are actually, if you think about massing in volume, they are almost more volumous than our two-story proposal because they're long, they have attached three-car, four-car garages on some of the homes, so even though they don't go up, they go out a lot more. Bob and Eleanor's property is the third-largest property in the neighborhood. Most of the other properties are much smaller. So we reviewed the zoning ordinance and the residential design guidelines, and I always talk to staff before starting any project, just to make sure, at the planning department, to make sure that what are the concerns and what would be the concerns? And we had identified the neighborhood guidelines. With the neighborhood context, we chose to show six houses across the street as well as three on the other side because the 2-2-5 concept didn't really work with our neighborhood, but we wanted to show nine homes total, 5-2-2, so we showed 6-3. And when you get to one of the homes... I'd like to put this on there. So early on in the design phase, we identified this home in the neighborhood. This is 80 Oak Grove. It also has a two-story massing that goes pretty much straight up. It is very close. It's right on the setback, so the front of the house is about 25 feet away from the street, and so we felt, even though, again, an eclectic, informal neighborhood, harking, this one harking towards a Tudor style, but again, what we were looking at was the massing. There's another two-story home that is identified by staff in our neighborhood. It is far more contemporary. Sorry, I'm looking for the photo. This home was recently built. Bob and Eleanor's house has an L shape, and it comes out forward a bit, and we decided to keep that single-story massing where it comes out into the space in looking at how this neighborhood, or this house here in the neighborhood, also comes out. So we did work with staff to try to develop this design, and when we engaged the consulting architect, as you noticed, if you read the report, he did have very favorable responses, and we did address all of his issues and redesign per his issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kreschner. Questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Would you just take me through the changes you made in response to his letter? In particular, and I know you made them, but I would feel more comfortable if you could take me through the frontal changes that you made.
So the initial design, we have the single-story section that comes straight out, and the initial design had, from that single-story part, went straight up. Even though it had the gable end, the wall adjacent to it was also going to be flush with the gable end, so that you see the gable end on the left side of the structure. On the right side of the structure, it would have also continued straight up. When he identified setting that back, we took the second story and that shed side of the gable, we pushed back at least two feet and lowered the height just a little bit. So we still maintained the front gable end on the left side. That is part of this national style, and then made it the gable end with wing with the setback portion, and also put more depth into the porch when we did that.
Commissioner Hanson?
I was just wondering if you could comment on the sizing of the house. I understood your logic in terms of looking at the lots and everything, but the residential design guidelines are pretty specific about not, you know, being similar in bulk and scale and mass, and while it stops short of saying you can't be the biggest house in the neighborhood, you understand that it sets a major precedent for anyone else. And as you pointed out, there's other houses in the neighborhood that also have large lots, and they may not have been developed. So what my question was, is you mentioned 70 Oak Grove as a model, and we've seen plenty of examples of 2,500-square-foot homes since I've been on the commission where they have four bedrooms and an office. What about staying under 3,000 square feet or under 2920? Makes it impossible for you to give them what they want? And I'd like to hear from the architect.
Okay. So we had a certain program. Again, like Bob and Eleanor said, that they had this number of bedrooms they wanted. They wanted the bedrooms, the children's bedrooms, to be large enough to have a study area in addition to a bed and a dresser, and they wanted to have a more modern master bathroom. Like, what I mean by modern is not in design, but as in being able to have a separate tub from a shower and that sort of sizing. The downstairs portion, we wanted to maintain as much of the integrity of that downstairs portion. We worked very closely in sticking with the demolition affidavit so that we did not exceed that 50% rule, so we wanted to keep and maintain almost all of those exterior walls. So the only square footage that was added to the first floor was to straighten out a funky line. It's only 68 square feet on the first floor. So those sort of things kind of drove the house to getting to the larger size. We are well under the floor area ratio. If you look at the chart, the floor area ratio is only .27, but we also have the third-largest lot in the neighborhood, so that extra 211 square feet, when we finally decided to submit the design that way and come before you and the planning commission, which was the driving force for coming here, we decided we just needed that 211 square feet.
Okay, that helps. How long ago did you purchase the home? How long ago did the Tullises purchase the home?
We purchased the home in 2009, so about seven years ago.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I had some questions about architectural style and how it fits into the neighborhood. In your letter, you describe it as national style. In your testimony, I wasn't clear. Did you say it was not national style?
No, it is national style, but there are different types of the national style. This is the national style, and this is identified as gable end and wing, and as you see, we are also maintaining the same types of materials, siding. This is the national style as well, which is called an I-wing, and I'll identify. That's pretty much the drawing that Bob and Eleanor gave me when they first came to me to say that they would, this is the home they've always dreamed in, that reminds them of the homes that they grew up in.
Okay, so two follow-ups to that.
Yes.
Are there other national-style homes, either in the neighborhood or in Los Cados, that would argue for compatibility?
Yes, I wish I had addresses for you, but there are national style. Oftentimes, the layperson would call a national style a stripped-down Victorian, a Victorian without a lot of filigree, so they're often misidentified, but if you do look at, I can tell you that since I live near Short Road in Shannon, there are a few in Shannon that I can, that we can, but if you look around, even in Bob and Eleanor's neighborhood, you can identify a few of that kind of style. What's the street what you come in on?
Euclid.
Euclid. That have that type of style, siding, board and batten, the sloped roofs at 6 and 12. You do see that.
Okay. And then the other question is, the changes that you made that were recommended by the consulting architect to push back that facade, is that still consistent with the style?
It is consistent with the style in that it maintains that type of gable end and wing, although we are putting the porch on another side from that specific example. If you look in the field guide of American Houses, it identifies that in the language.
Okay, thank you.
Do the Tullises have letters of support from the adjacent neighbors or any of the neighbors?
We don't have specific letters, but we spoke to all the neighbors in the neighborhood that you had identified and received their support. Nobody had verbally mentioned any issue with what we were trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none. At this time, I'll invite comments from members of the public. I don't have any speaker cards, and I don't see anybody coming forward to speak about this particular item, so if you would like to add five more minutes to your application with any further comments, you're more than welcome to.
Yes, I'd like to let Bob speak.
So Eleanor did it so well, I don't have much to say, but I just did want to point out one thing. I'm a numbers guy, so I definitely took into account the numbers that you presented, and I heard what Mr. Kane said specifically about the guidelines and us going over by 200 square feet. The one thing that I would like to point out, though, is as Jennifer mentioned, we do have the third-largest lot in the neighborhood, but along with that, there are two other homes that have larger FARs than we do, and we kept that into, we took that into account as we were developing our plans, too, to stay within the FAR, but also be, the FAR, but also be significantly lower than what was allowed.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Seeing none. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments? Entertain a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to make a comment because when I went out and looked at the property and looked at the story poles, I came away with a different impression than I now have, having heard the changes they've made and that, and there's no question, and it's a beautiful lot, not surrounded by homes because of its cul-de-sac location and that kind of thing. So the reason I mention that is, when I looked at it first and looked at the story poles, I thought, wow, this really kind of jumps into your face. But having heard what they've done and where it's situated, I just wanted to say I'm much more, it's interesting, staff in one sense says, recommends denial, but that is not the language being used by staff, with all due respect, and I respect that, but, you know, I've got one thing in writing and I've got something else orally, and then we've got the architect, who was critical, and then he was responded to, and he says it's okay, too. So I just throw that out. I didn't want to make a motion yet, but I'm much more disposed to this project than I was, for example, this morning.
Commissioner Erickson?
For the sake of not being redundant, I would have just said everything that Commissioner O'Donnell just said.
Thank you. Commissioner Erickson, Vice Chair Kane?
At the risk of being redundant, what I was going to recommend to Commissioner O'Donnell is that unless there's further discussion, I'd make his motion.
I will. I will follow my colleagues' always considered advice. I move that we approve the application, and we find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 1503 of the California Environmental Quality Act, which is more particularly described in Exhibit 2. We make the finding that the project complies with the residential guidelines, also in Exhibit 2. We would make the required considerations as required by Section 292150 of the Town Code for granting an approval of an architecture and site application. See Exhibit 2. We approve the architecture and site application S-16041 with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3 and the development plans attached as Exhibit 8. And we're approving the application with the attached conditions, and that's it.
Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second the motion, and I wanted to comment on why I will support the motion. I initially was very concerned about it being the largest house in the neighborhood, but and that's something that we're always really reluctant to have happen because it changes the nature of the neighborhood. But in this particular case, the lot and the location of the lot justifies, as well as the applicant's compliance with the architectural consultant's recommendations, makes it, mitigates the concern about going a couple of square hundred feet over the second-largest house in the neighborhood.
Further discussion? Vice Chair Kane, you have a handup?
Yeah, I intend to support the motion, but we talk about precedent value or prejudice, and I want to stress again, there isn't any. There are no precedents. We have standards. We have guidelines. We have discretion. As the Director of Community Development is fond of saying, it is our purview. As the Director of Community Development is fond of saying, it is our purview to do this and that and the other thing. So having said that this is not a precedent case at all, and I've got the purview to do what seems to make sense, I'll be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Erickson?
I actually would consider this a precedent-setting decision if we move this motion, because I think, based on the testimony, the report of the consulting architect, and the comments that my fellow commissioners have made, that this house does meet what is probably the most important consideration, and that's neighborhood compatibility. And because for me, neighborhood compatibility is not, while it, while it does take into consideration size, mass, scale, and single-story versus two-story, it's much more than that. It's how the style and the sensitivity of design in a particular lot situated in a neighborhood fits to that neighborhood. And so I think this is one that clearly meets the neighborhood compatibility standard, and I would be quite comfortable with it setting a precedent for future decisions.
I concur with your comments regarding the neighborhood compatibility, Commissioner Erickson. To me, that's an extreme priority, so I would be supporting the motion.
Any further discussion? I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passage unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights on the actions of the commission on this item?
Thank you, Chair Badami. There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.